So order Planning Commission regular meeting, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five and the council chambers called to order. Um, we'll start with a roll call Eric Valcheff here. Rihanna and Holler. Megan winners.
Here.
Vincent Redella.
Here.
Alice AJ. Okay. Um, with that, um, we have the minutes included in the packet. Um, from the last meeting, I have read through the minutes um, and reviewed. Although I was not present, um, so I will not abstain. Um, but do I have an motion to approve the minutes or any?
Yeah, I'll move to the first one.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, okay, then sir approved. Um, so tonight we're gonna have um, a couple of things. Um, we're gonna have a uh, a bit of a presentation, if you will, on the draft zoning code. Um, or specifically around some of the the issues that bubble up around conformity. Um, we'll talk about that in a moment. Um, so, um, at the request of many, um, we typically reserve public comment for the end. We're gonna do public comment um, before. And at the end, however, for the before section, uh, public comment is limited to only those items that are on tonight's agenda, okay? Um, so with that, um, I know there's a sign in sheet. Um, but there's not a electronic sign in sheets or for our friends that are online. So if you would like to uh, comment online, just um, there's a little button on the bottom that says raise your hand, raise your hand and we'll have you unmuted. Um, to be able to um, make your comment. Um, we've asked our independent counsel um, to be the timekeeper this evening, you have three minutes to speak. Um, public comment on the agenda items um, is for Crafton residents, property owners, business owners uh, only. Uh, comments are limited to three minutes, as I mentioned. And uh, as always, we please refrain from any personal attacks or obscene language. So, thank you with that, um, any uh, public comments?
Happy Sandy.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna try to go fast to keep in my three minutes. Okay, as I read the zoning liability memo, I immediately felt scared like, oh, my gosh, if the twenty five foot width in the twenty five hundred square foot lot size updates aren't passed, then residents with nonconforming lots are doomed. Per the memo, the law requires that nonconformities eventually be brought into compliance. And those homeowners may have to buy their neighbor's house, demolish it and combine it. Combine the properties to be compliant. Kinda crazy. If that wasn't enough to scare you, then you continue reading the supposed liabilities. These properties are worth less, they can't be changed or significantly expanded, they won't be able to get a loan to keep up their property. Their homeowner's insurance will be more costly and there's no way the property can be conforming. These liabilities are extremely exaggerated and can be easily disputed. Hopefully you all can see that. If not, I'll be glad to sit down with you and share my thoughts, I don't have enough time to go through that. I believe most folks in the community oppose the width and lot reduction from the current fifty five thousand to the forty four thousand. But I think as a compromise, the forty four thousand is more than enough of a compromise for the citizens. I also don't agree with the latest memo requesting side yard setbacks reduced to two and a half foot. The purpose of a setback air to maintain space between buildings for fire safety, access for property maintenance and preserving privacy between neighboring properties. Not to accommodate larger structures on a small lot. Two and a half foot is too small, no matter what size the lot is. I also disagree with the statement that reducing lot width and size will better reflect Crafton's development pattern. As per the memo with the four hundred or forty foot, four thousand square foot code, there would be fifteen hundred and seventy four out of two thousand one hundred and eighty five residential lots or seventy two percent conforming. Seventy two percent is a much better reflection of Crafton than the four hundred and nineteen residential lots or twenty percent that you're trying to make conforming. Then the impact analysis memo states that thirty two vacant properties will become buildable with the twenty five foot, twenty five thousands or twenty five hundred square foot code. These properties are already buildable. If you read section two twenty five dash fifty five, nonconforming lots, letter A. Any lot of record existing at the effective date of this chapter may be used for the erection of a single family dwelling or an accessory structure to such dwelling without a lot area or with variance, even though its lot area with or not within the minimum required in this chapter. Unless you're trying to build something other than single family homes on these lots, there's no need for this change. Finally, nonconforming lot width and size were not a concern six months ago when this draft zoning code was sent to council. Why is it an issue now? This seems very suspicious and makes me wonder, what are the true motives for these requests? In my opinion, reducing lot width size and side yard setbacks are not in the best interest of Crafton. I asked the planning commission to reject these requests.
Uh, Zoom.
Anyone on Zoom wish to comment, feel free to raise your hands. Phyllis Barber. You are live.
Hi, hi, everybody, um, seventeen Belvedere Street. I'm still trying to keep up with the um, discussion tonight, but uh, I guess I have a house on Belvedere Street, it's nineteen ten or older. And when I looked at the last um, uh, nonconforming map, my house is considered nonconforming. I don't understand that in principle because my house was here before many of the others before the apartment buildings that are next door, yet my house is now unconforming. So that's my general comment and I'm gonna listen to the discussion tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Phyllis. Did you just sign up? Yeah, go ahead, state your name for the record.
That's work goes six oh one clear view. I just have a question. If anybody can answer it. Why are we going to twenty five foot lots? With the setbacks, you can only build twenty foot wide building. We want twenty foot wide buildings all over the place? Now we're gonna look like the South Side or Lawrenceville or whatever. Why?
Population, let it be, sorry.
We don't want any more population here, do we?
No, just.
Why would we want more population? Then you're overcrowding the the community. We had that issue years ago with the multifamily, people were turning single family homes into multifamily. It was detrimental to the community. So someone had a bright idea, we can't do it anymore. If you haven't changed the multifamily, you change it back to single, you can't change it back to multifamily. Because it changed the flavor of the community. And that's why those that you were newer to the community, I've been in this area since nineteen fifty nine. Why did you all move here? Because of the way it is. Why change it? I want somebody to answer that. And that's just for me to pose the question and then it just goes in the air. Someone has to answer that question before you go any further. Anyone wanna answer?
We'll answer it during the presentation.
During what?
During the presentation, which is next on the agenda. Uh, Nicole Curvin is raising her hand on Zoom. Nicole, you should be live.
Hi there, uh, Nicole Curvin, one eighty four South Grandview. Um, I am sorry that I missed the name of the person in the tank top who was presenting first, talking about reducing lot size. I just want to emphatically second everything she said, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
My voice, yeah, it's an audio recording, am I allowed to play it?
Absolutely.
Yeah. An icon, yeah, side button on the top left, yeah, it wasn't getting ordered in. Wasn't getting, sorry, I don't know. You're gonna receive it?
So it's seven three four. Ready?
This is a stream clone. It's it's on. We can try maybe with one of these mics.
Then the proposed zoning changes are being driven by a relentless push for increased density, something this community has repeatedly opposed. Since Jim Price's involvement, this project has shifted from addressing zoning updates to a full blown density initiative. First, it was accessory dwelling units. When that narrative fell apart, the focus turned to breaking up our historical homes into conversion apartments. The public pushed back again, recognizing these changes would destroy the character of our neighborhoods. Now, with ADUs and conversion apartments off the table, the latest tactic is this nonconforming properties argument. This week, Jim Price released a half baked analysis recommending smaller lots to reduce the number of nonconforming properties. The truth is, nonconforming lots are not a problem in Crafton. They are legal and manageable. In essence, the nonconformity classification is simply another regulating tool. The recommendation of shrinking lot sizes isn't about fixing a problem or helping homeowners. It's about creating a pathway for large scale development. That means more overcrowding, strain on resources and the loss of neighborhood character and affordability. It also opens the door for corporate landlords to buy up properties and tip the balance between rental and privately owned homes. Jim Price's amateur analysis does not support voting yes to his lot size recommendations, let alone the zoning code as a whole. There is much more to iron halt before a final draft is ready. And the early March public engagement date that is being pushed is unreasonable. Given the history of misleading information and late changes, a careful review of other changes within the draft code is warranted. Council members like John Oliverio have promised to slow this process down until we get a zoning code that works for Crafton. Not Allegheny County, not State of Pennsylvania and not federal housing agendas, but that works for Crafton. We are not there yet. This draft code is incomplete and should not be rushed. The public deserves ample time to re- review the final draft when ready. So that they may be able to engage meaningfully. This community is asking this commission to please consider.
I think it might have.
He had six seconds left.
Oh, well.
That's it.
Uh, Kristen on Zoom. This is in here.
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Yep, um, I just want to reiterate what um, everybody has said previous to me that I I agree. Um, I am not in favor of uh, changing the lot size so that the setback is minimized down to two point five feet. Um, I think that would, that's, that's too close in between properties. And um, one of the reasons why I purchased a house here in Crafton was because there is space in between um, uh, neighbors, you know, I I don't want to live on top of my neighbors and I don't think they wanna live on top of me.
Thank you, Kristen.
Any others online? No others in the room, okay. Um, so we're going to move forward with a staff presentation. Um, or around this uh, this topic, actually, uh, public comment, or I'm sorry, the drafting zoning code um, is going to be presented um, now. Um, the current conformity, what it affects, how it affects residential lots. Um, what the reduction means, um, what the setbacks would entail. Um, and what the plan is to address that particular issue. Um, the legal liabilities of nonconforming use and grandfathering of what's already here. Um, and you know, generally speaking, you know, um, you know, the the issues that were raised um, uh, within this, both with regard to the um, the state of state, if you will, in the first memo and then the analysis uh, and findings in the second memo. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Yep.
And the staff team to go ahead and move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everybody, Jim, you just jump in as you feel compelled. Uh, we will dive into the presentation, I think we'll address uh, at least some of the concerns raised during public comments. So here's what we're gonna talk about during this presentation, we'll define and level set what nonconforming uses are, so we're all talking from the same page. Uh, we'll discuss an analysis that is a legitimate analysis of our current and projected nonconforming uses. So current nonconforming uses under our current zoning laws and future nonconforming uses under the way the new zoning code is presently written. We'll discuss liabilities and solutions to uh, for nonconforming uses. We'll definitely address residential side yard setbacks. And then kind of the orphan conversation is a conservity, conservancy district designations within the code. Um, that probably don't make a lot of sense. All right, so jumping in definitions, I hate to be the guy that actually reads verbatim, the, all the words on the screen during a PowerPoint presentation. But for the record, this is important. So within the code, there are three definitions for nonconforming things. And those three definitions are nonconforming use. And that's when a use is simply not allowed within a zoning district, but it's grandfathered in. So an example is a gas station in a residential neighborhood, an old gas station that's still, that's still there. Uh, the next phrase uh, term is nonconforming building or structure. This is when the use, the use of the structure may be allowed, but the structure itself is misplaced on the parcel, on the property. So an example, which we will get to, a house in a residential zone that is too close to its neighboring house, otherwise known as side setbacks. And then finally, uh, the other big one, nonconforming lots. Uh, lot sizes that are not allowed within a given zone district. And the example for Crafton is all of the twenty five feet width lots located throughout Crafton are examples of nonconforming lots. And Sandy is absolutely right when she says you can build, if you own a vacant, nonconforming lot, you can build a permitted use on that lot. And in most cases, that permitted use is a house in a residential zone. So that is absolutely correct. Uh, but what, so what that means conversely is most of those lots are already built. Which means they are presently nonconforming. So this isn't a just conversation about how many more lots can we get new things on? This is a conversation about there are existing homes with existing households that are presently nonconforming on these twenty five foot lots, mostly twenty five feet. So how do we help those neighbors? Yep, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about that. Please don't interrupt. So now the mapping, so this is Jim, this is your analysis, if you wanna jump in on this?
Sure, so we took um, the lot sizes that currently exist in the borough. Um, and this is a map of them. Um, and they vary anywhere from fifteen feet wide up to um, uh, well over three hundred feet wide. Most, most are in the range of thirty to fifty feet. Um, and under the current code, about forty seven percent, almost fifty percent of the lots are nonconforming, putting them at risk to what we're talking about before. And while um, uh, Sandy uh, said that there, that the risks may be overblown, they are still risks and they are risks that only fall upon the people that are nonconforming. Um, and so something to consider, so this is the map. If um, we leave things the way they are, about half of the borough's uh, buildings are currently nonconforming. If, and if you could switch to the next slide. If we move to the next slide, this is where we're currently, the current draft is. Where you have, as we mentioned, fifteen hundred lots that are conforming and six hundred lots, that means six hundred households that are not conforming. Um, that have been built around the borough. So this is what we are currently seeing in the current draft. And I forget what your next slide is here, Mike.
I forget as well, let's take a look. Okay, so let's go back one slide, so if the new zoning code is adopted as written, six hundred eleven lots, twenty eight percent of property owners within Crafton will remain nonconforming. Most of those lots are occupied with a house and a household.
And I wanna, I wanna mention one other thing, uh, one thing that was incorrect in one of the comments that was made uh, was a statement that if we go down to twenty five foot lots, thirty one new prop, thirty one properties would be um, permitted to build. And I wanna correct one thing you said, Mike, that the state, the, the um, the, the rule is not that you can build anything permitted. It's that you can build a, oh, the only thing you're allowed to build on a nonconforming light is a single family house. Um, no matter what district you're in. Now, i- if you um, and, but if we drop from forty feet to twenty five feet, it would allow um, seventeen properties to be built upon with anything that's permitted in that district. Um, which would most likely be only single family homes because that's what would be likely uh, to be built on that. But I just wanted to clarify that, that it's not, and this again, is not about building density. This is about making, everybody has talked about raising property values. And this is about raising property values, this is about making properties that already exist easier to repair, easier to expand and easier to sell. Mike, if you wanna go to the next.
Yep. So I'll handle this one, Jim, so there's a big memo, everybody saw in my packet, there's a few big memos. Uh, this is a summary of the liabilities associated with owning a nonconforming property within uh, any jurisdiction. And I, let me just summarize it very quickly. Nonconforming properties are worth less than comparable conforming properties. That is, that is a reality and I will demonstrate it, I know you're shaking your head, Sandy, but we, I will demonstrate it. Uh, owners are sign, are subject to uh, significant more regulatory burdens than conforming property, properties. There's a entirely, there's a whole chapter of more regu- regulations for nonconforming properties than conforming properties. The risk of blight increases with nonconforming properties and home and property insurance premiums are likely higher. True, true things. Okay, I'm not, I don't want, I don't wanna back and forth, but please don't interrupt.
This is extremely rude.
Yeah, don't interrupt.
Please stop interrupting the meeting and just allow the presentation to continue.
And there is, as Sandy mentioned, there is no simple pathway to conformance. But for buying your neighbor's property, demolishing it and merging the property line, so that is the simplest pathway in a material manner to cure a nonperformance, but in a legal manner, the simplest pathway to cure a nonperformance is simply changing a number within the draft zoning code to make those properties conforming. In the commercial district, right now, the vast majority of properties within our current zoning code are nonconforming properties. In the new zoning code, they become conforming based on matching what is happening on the street in reality and translating that into zoning code language. So that's what we are proposing to do with the houses in residential districts that are currently nonconformed. So, I am gonna dwell on the next two, three slides only on topic one, but obviously we're welcome to chat and dive deep into the other three topics. But I wanna just demonstrate the legal impacts of owning a nonconforming use. What you see on the right is a, is a page from the standard agreement for the sale of real estate. This is a contract to buy property. Every Realtor in the state uses this contract to work with their clients to buy and sell properties, houses uh, within the state of Pennsylvania. This contract is written by the Pennsylvania State Real Estate Commission. Um, it is a, a very legal, very standard, very real document that impacts the value of a home and how homes are uh, negotiated on the open market. This section highlighted within the contract to buy and sell real estate basically says, if zoning is nonconforming, the buyer may walk from the deal at no penalty to the buyer. No penalties to the buyer. That's how big of a risk it is to the buyer. And it also poses a risk to the seller because the seller wants to sell the home. And so if the seller's home is nonconforming, it poses a risk, risk diminishes property value within the ice of marketplace. And that's, so it's reflected within the standard agreement for sale of real estate. There's another section, this is another page within the standard agreement for sale of real estate. It's highlighted, you can see it's a contingency section. The buyer may make the contract contingent upon verifying zoning conformity of property uses, including accessory uses. So maybe the, the home is conforming, but the garage, the accessory use is nonconforming. And if that's the case, then the buyer has the option to walk. So there are two sections within the agreement to buy and sell real estate, the standard agreement that give buyers rights to walk away without punishment because it is a recognized industry liability to own a nonconforming parcel. Furthermore, most buyers get mortgages to buy their real estate. I know I have one, most of all of us have one. In order to qualify for a mortgage, once you execute that purchase and sales agreement, what you just saw, the next step your mortgage lender makes you do is go out and get an appraisal. This is a page from the appraisal form that every appraiser in the country uses on the rec. This is the standard appraisal form. If a property is marked as nonconforming within this appraisal form, mortgage lenders may decline to fund the sale until the, until the zoning is fixed. Why? Because it increases the risk of a lower appraised value. And this also applies to refinancing and home equity loans, which also make you get appraisals on your property to justify the amount of refinance or home equity that you're asking for. So the appraisal, and it's tough to see with these captions on the bottom, but the second line from the very bottom of the screen just shows what's on the form, zoning compliance, legal, legal, nonconforming, grand, grandfathered use, no zoning or illegal. If it is marked anything other than legal, there's a very real chance it will reduce the value of that appraisal. Is, it's, that's a real thing that the industry does. So our recommendation is to indeed reduce the, the minimum lot width within the NR and CR residential districts to twenty five feet. And if that is done, then all of those red parcels you saw on the first two maps diminish to the parcels, to the red parcels you see on this map here. Now, there's more to the but I feel like I should pause and see if there's any questions yet.
So what you're seeing here, the red that's remaining was present in the current draft, so this is the proposed twenty five foot. The prior map um, was the current draft. So, it's a, it's a one to one, so everything here that's left, it was already read in both of the prior two, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't bring anything in that's new. And so all of those that exist currently is nonconforming would be reduced in the current draft um, si- statistically significantly. And then this would bring it down to what you have remained.
Correct, okay.
Correct. And, and I wanna mention a few other things, you know, there's talk of this increasing density. This won't increase density because it doesn't increase any buildable lots. Because if they're already under this, under this code and the previous code buildable, then they have not changed that whatsoever. The only thing this change does is make all of Crafton's current homes buildable. I mean, um, uh, conforming, so they eliminate that need to go through those extra steps. It's also important to note that most of the red that is left on this lot are actually not full lots, they are side yards for people. Or in the cases where you're seeing them grouped together, they are townhomes um, that follow different regulations when their, when their lot lines are built the way they are. So they're actually not really nonconforming in a traditional sense. And then the rest of them are typically, and, and another thing that has come up is, well, what if I have a fifty foot lot and I wanna be able to build two homes on it now? That is not possible because under the definition of a dwelling in the code, you are only allowed to have one principal, single family home or one principal, uh, two family home on any given lot. So you can only have one principal use on a lot, so you can't even squeeze two houses in one lot. This does not, this is what matches Crafton's character. And we will show that there are more than seventy nine properties currently that have twenty five foot lot, twenty five foot wide lots and more than half of those have homes on them. If you wanna move uh, to the next one unless you had any more comments.
Do you wanna start talking about setbacks, Jim, do you wanna stay on it?
Uh, yeah, we can, uh, if you, if, we could mention that, that if you wanna mention this too, if you wanna go through this portion, you can, Mike.
Thanks to the memo you, you wrote on setbacks, so see the slide, your, your recommendation within the memo for lots uh, below thirty five feet. Thanks to the memo you, you wrote on setbacks. So see the slide, your, your recommendation within the memo for lots, uh, below thirty-five feet.
Right, and that is to recommend a, a two-point-five-foot setback, meaning that there would be, in those smaller houses, there would be five feet between houses. And I've heard safety brought up. Now, mind you, there are row houses and townhouses that have no gaps between them. And they have not been deemed unsafe by anybody in the borough. We have attached houses that are not deemed unsafe. Um, and five feet wide exists in already several neighborhoods in the community. This is what already exists in Crafton. Um, and by, by not doing this, um, you're putting the burden on the people with the smallest, um, and perceivably probably the least wealthy people in the borough. You're putting the burden of this regulation on them by not allowing this change. This is not a density change. This is about making Crafton, uh, more conforming and bringing up housing values in Crafton.
Okay, so, go ahead, Jim.
And just to give you an idea, I went through all of these different and, and picked all of the different areas where there are twenty-five-foot lots. This is on South Emily Street. Those are twenty-five-foot lots. This is on Promenade and Linwood. Those are twenty-five-foot wide lots. This is on Fountain Street. Those are twenty-five-foot lots. Um, this is on, also on Fountain Street. Those are from above. Those are on the right. Those are twenty-five-foot lots. On the left, those are, uh, thirty-foot lots. Um, this is on Mueller Ave. Those are twenty-five-foot wide lots. This is on Mueller Ave, twenty-five-foot wide lots. Also on Mueller Ave, twenty-five-foot wide lot.
Really likes Mueller.
Yep, well, there were quite a few on Mueller. Mueller, twenty-five-foot wide lots. Um, this is twenty-five-foot lots on Clearview. One of our best, you know, uh, obviously a very well-known street. Thomas Street, every street, every house on Thomas Street is on a twenty-five-foot wide lot. That's a picture from above to give you an idea of how many there are. And this is on Afton Avenue. This is right next to our park. Those are twenty-five-foot wide lots. So we're not advocating for adding lots to the borough. We are advocating for making the houses that already exist in Crafton conforming.
Yeah, this, I mean, we can't emphasize this point more. These homes already exist. So.
All over the borough.
All over the borough. So the simplest way toward conformance is to write a zoning code that reflects what's happening in reality for these homes. Uh, a question came up, or a comment, why are we discussing this now, six months later? Uh, because quite frankly, it never occurred to us until last month's discussion kind of delved into some non-conforming conversations. And that, that got Jim and I moving on the topic, and now we're making this recommendation. Um, so, uh, that is everything. There's two, two or three more slides in the presentation. We got to talk about the orphan, uh, recommendation in here about conservancy districts. Uh, which is unrelated to non-conforming uses in, in a way, but also kind of related.
Well, it is related to conforming uses, just in a different way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is, you know, while doing this analysis, we want to, we want to make as many houses conforming as possible so that, you know, property values increase in the borough and it reflects, and this code reflects what actually exists already on the ground in Crafton. Um, the orange, the ones that you're, the, the map that you're seeing currently right now is the conservancy districts. Um, the, the circle on the top right-hand corner is the one, are the houses that are up on the hill next, right next to Crafton Heights. When they originally marked these conservancy was prior to our, our, it, that was in a previous code that they were marked conformity. And they were marked that because they're on a steep slope. Well, the reality is the only homes in that area that are actually on a steep slope are the ones on the left side of that section there. The ones not circled in blue. The ones circled in blue are not on steep slopes. So there is no reason that we would have them in a conservancy. So we recommend switching that district to the NR district, thus allowing those houses to be conforming. And as you can see, several of those lots are thirty and twenty-five foot wide as well. That would bring all those houses into conformity, again, raising the ability to invest in your house in Crafton and to raise property values. There's no evidence that this is going to increase density or increase the number of houses in Crafton. Um, and well, I want to go back because I only talked about the one up on the top of the hill. The other one is on south, on, uh, South Grand View Ave. All of the houses that back up to the creek are listed as, uh, conservancy right now. But the reality is, the, they're, and they're listed as conservancy because they have steep slopes. But the steep slopes do not exist at the front of the properties. The front of the properties are relatively flat. So if, if the property has a relatively flat surface, I recommend moving it into, uh, the NR district. Or in this case, um, I think it was NR, or it might have been, this one might have been a CR because there are several multi-unit houses on this borough, on this street. Um, I think there's a four unit and a three unit on this street. Um, but I recommend moving these into the, um, uh, into the NR or the CR district. And now if you want to switch to the next slide. Um, we also recommend these two other sections of South Grand View Ave, which are listed as conservancy for the same reasons. They have steep slopes on the backside of their, um, properties, but on the front side where houses are allowed based on setback rules. Um, the houses would be perfectly fine, and we would, we would absolutely encourage people to rebuild or build a new house if that's their, their interest. And that also raises these property values because they're not non-conforming. Um, the, the one on top, we recommend moving that to the NR district. Uh, the one on the bottom, we recommend moving that to the CR district because those are all townhouses and a multi-unit, um, structure. Um, thus making a several, an additional percentage of, of, um, properties conform.
Slide is the last slide. Questions from the committee?
If I'm understanding how changing the, um, lot sizes would affect property values. Let's take, uh, I think it was Mueller Avenue, that a lot of twenty-five foot, uh, wi- uh, widths, how would changing that affect those property, property values?
Mueller, let me pull up the picture. Um, I mean, at the risk of being redundant, the real estate industry sees it as a liability to have a non-conforming use. And therefore, generally speaking, there's a lot of interwoven issues there that come into play, but statistically, I don't know, is this Mueller, Mueller, um, properties that are non-conforming per- perform less well in terms of market value than comparable properties that are conforming.
And it allows for, um, uh, do, making changes with less regulatory barriers. So if I'm going to, let's say I want to put an expansion on the back of my house and add maybe a bedroom for my grandmother or whatever. Um, I can do that much more easily if my house is already conforming because I don't have to battle the, I don't have to use the non-conforming section of the, uh, of the code, which is just a hurdle that is difficult to, to jump over.
But there's a lot of pathways towards being able to do things with your home within the non-conforming section. But many of those pathways lead to the zoning hearings board, which is a public meeting and expensive. It's a quasi-judicial process. It's a burdensome process to do standard, a standard, uh, extension on your house, which for a conforming property owner only takes a building permit from the code officer. For a non-conforming owner, it takes a journey through the zoning hearing board. Uh, so that, that's a significant difference in regulatory hurdles.
I would just say I don't really feel as though this information is pushing me to make changes. Um, I think when we get into the conversations about property values, it's very nuanced. Um, and I think that both you and Jim are doing your jobs and presenting us with a recommendation that would bring more of our existing structures into conforming, and I appreciate that. I just think though that the arguments being about real estate, I'm not very moved by personally.
Agreed, I get. Yeah, agreed. Like data, I love data. Just saying it doesn't really help me much. And I mean, I think the, they're small lots. They probably are at lower value due to lot size, no garage, off-street parking. Not to diss anyone who lives there, I'm sorry, but, um, there's a, there's a lot of factors. I don't think a home buyer, if you want to get out of contract, you can get out of contract really easy. There's a lot of different ways to get out of a real estate contract. Make it easy, that, fine, but I just, I don't know.
I have to wait till the end of the talking, isn't it?
I, I just want to say again that the intention of this rezoning or the zoning update is to know more about our current borough, what, what we have and to try to make our code to be what we currently have. And I understand why we would recommend twenty-five-foot si- uh, lot sizes because of the current, because we have them. Um, I just know that I paid a lot for my house. It might be non-conforming, and those provisions are something that if you're buying your house or if you're selling a house in Crafton, you should be very aware of. I just, at the moment, I don't, and I'm not opposed to continuing to have this conversation. I just, at the moment, don't feel ready to take such a vote.
Okay.
Okay. But again, I understand that the reason this is proposed is not about density or long-term nefarious, uh, vision planning on staff. And I really reject that, and I wish that our community would take a moment to frankly chill a second. We are volunteers here who are spending our time doing a lot of work to better understand the code. None of us are experts, and so when everyone comes in and starts accusing us, I mean, and, and disrespecting our time by talking over us and all of that, it's just really, like, unappreciated. You don't know where we stand, and so let us talk about it. Um, and that's all.
Thank you for those comments, and I will add to those comments. Absolutely respect every decision planning commission makes. And, uh, it often happens, councils and commissions and appointed bodies disagree with staff recommendations. I can, I, I think I safely speak for Jim that, you know, we, we try to help. Um, I want to say this well. If there's an opportunity to help all parcels within Crafton by virtue of revising the zoning code, then it's worth our effort to make that recommendation. So we really appreciate, appreciate your comments.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate them too. I think my biggest concern is now that we know that this was asked for by the people who live on Thomas Street, this is one of the ways that we can fix it um, without affecting anybody else's property. We're not going to flood the property, you know, flood the borough with anybody, with any new housing stock. We're not trying to jam density down anybody's throat. We have heard you loud and clear. Um, I, my biggest concern is that the six hundred and eleven families that are affected, or maybe it's not six hundred and eleven families, but probably around five hundred, once you take out vacant lots or side yards. Um, the five hundred or so families are typically the least wealthy families in the borough who have the biggest hurdles to deal with when they want to invest in their house. That's my biggest concern.
That's compelling to me, and I think as something that we should, why I would like to learn more about this before we take a vote tonight. Um, especially, and I'm also, I, I would like to know more about, you know, a five-foot side yard setback and a side yard setback being two and a half feet. And I also, I do hear, I used to live in a townhouse that had no side. I, I do understand that. I just would, I am curious to learn more, so I'm not ready to vote on something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, um, uh, desire for any motion, uh, personally. Um, you know, I appreciate the due diligence behind this because, um, for many of us, non-conformity does affect our homes, um, period. Um, in the real estate, real estate finance, um, world, um, that is considered a defect. Um, when you try and, uh, sell your home, uh, or you try and improve your home and the ability to, um, do things outside of the core property when you're non-conforming are basically zero to none. Um, you can do siding, you can do windows, you can do roofs. Um, um, but you can't add a garage or bedroom, you can't expand your bathroom, you can't do anything along those lines. Um, so that's where I think it was worth, it is worthwhile, um, doing the due diligence. And when you see, when you take it down to whatever happened over the years, where at some point somebody allowed the building, um, to happen on these twenty-five-foot lots, um, the zoning was then changed decades ago, um, that made these lots then non-conforming. Um, because we're in the zoning update right now, the opportunity to evaluate, as you've all seen, the risks, the benefits, the pros, the cons, the strengths, the weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Um, being able to look at this now, um, is the only time to really do it. With the stroke of a pen, changing that now, um, impacts a generation to come until this is, uh, this zoning is updated again. Um, so this was a presentation. Um, the ask is, um, for those here, those that'll be, um, brought up the speed via the recording and the, the minutes, um, to review it. Um, I don't see, um, anything else from this tonight other than educational and a presentation. So with that.
I'll just add one more thing if I can, that this does seem to be something that would bring a, obviously, a lot of our houses into conforming status. And I think that had it been brought up sooner, I would have been more compelled to support it potentially. But because we are so far down the process and it's evident that changes like this create confusion and continue to, um, I just, I just keep confused folks and, um, I, I just don't feel comfortable making such a change when we're this far down the path.
Thank you.
Ben's anything else? Nope. All right. Uh, before we move on, uh, to the business development subcommittee, um, please note in your packets, um, um, because the draft zoning, um, is currently under planning commission review, right? So this is where it is within the municipality right now. Um, our independent legal advisor, Mandy, has reviewed the public comment that was recently submitted to council. Um, we asked for her to weigh in with her findings. Um, those findings are included in your packet tonight. Again, they were presented to council. We're just, we're just kind of supporting the education to council. Um, with that, um, you'll see the final memo, memo, it's, uh, GRB law memo from Mandy Alcohn, uh, Kalhan. Um, that will be the final, um, piece. And it's not really a business agenda for us, but it's some work that we had done because it's resting with us, if you will. So you can leave that, and that will be taken up and, well, obviously included up to, uh, to council. With that, um, we're back to, uh, the agenda. Um, the next item on the agenda is the business development, um, um, uh, subcommittee, um. You had asked, um, before we, uh, go to that because it is final board, um, the final agenda item before we move to public comment. Um, for a brief update, um, and anecdotal update on the trail study. Um, the trail study, um, the RFP, the funds were awarded, uh, the grant was received. Um, the study has been put out. It's an RFP for public release. There are many, uh, apparently it was very well received in the, in the public sector, um, the public response sector. Um, there are many responses, many individuals, um, firms, et cetera, who are interested in helping us with our trail study. Um, but we won't know anymore until, I think the deadline is not coming up for another thirty days, several weeks, whatever it is. Um, there is a, there is a subcommittee from the trail study, um, which will be evaluating the RFP responses. Um, and from that, an award of determination evaluations all proceed from there. Um, as far as what we have done, we have met collectively one time. Um, we have, um, met collectively in the field, uh, one time this past Sunday and walked the areas. For those that, um, are not familiar with the trail study, the area of focus and interest here is the area that starts the sled riding hill and essentially, um, ends at the Public Works Building. So it follows the creek. People refer to it as the Creek Path. Is, a lot of it is, uh, Is a lot of it is uh uh flood play or what what do you call it? The the Army Corps of Engineers regularly, they have a, they have a a mound there for um uh flood mitigation. Um, so all those things need to be factored by people who are smart and understand that sort of stuff. And that's where that um external help has been requested. The other leg of uh what's under scrutiny for the trail study um is behind the former Dr. Sakai's office, those you know, Fig Tree Coffee, um connecting from the old Black Street Bridge down to the Woodlawn Busway. Um, there's kind of a right of way through there um that is not an official trail. I mean, it's it's certainly walkable, navigable, um, et cetera. So really, what are the, what are the activities that would need to bring that into an official um supported trail by the municipality? So that's it. Uh, we had a nice walk and we had good weather. So. Okay. Um, so with that, we move into uh Agenda Six, Business Development Subcommittee Update and Appointment of Committee Members.
Yeah, so um last meeting, we uh talked about, well, a few meetings ago, we decided to form the Business Development Committee comprised of residents and business owners um to join a committee to talk about the needs of businesses that exist in Crafton right now and to help identify the needs of the ways to attract more businesses to to come to our community. Um, we launched that uh application the day after our last planning commission meeting, and we were fortunate to have seven res um three residents and four business owners apply to that subcommittee. Um, so I'm um moving to um uh appoint all seven of them, and I can go through their names. Um, Kristen Shuley, Greg Wozniak, Logan Drew, Abby Kelly, Jennifer Baldoff, Short House, Heidi Mun, and Nick Kelly. Um, so I am, I guess, needing to require, do I need to move?
Yeah. If you make the motion, yeah.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll, um, um, just a discussion. So in doing this, um, if someone else were to wish to join uh this subcommittee in the future, does that limit their ability to join? Or is this kind of the the first batch of people?
Um, we had the application open for about two and a half weeks. Um, so at this point in time, this is our final committee. Um, the intention of the committee is to not to be about a six to seven month committee and then we'll um assess whether we should continue if a a new group of people wants to join, um, but it is a short term um sort of.
So there's a, there's a fuse to it. So in six months, um, uh, give or take. Um, this will come to an end and our question will be, does this become something else? Is this reestablished?
We'll help you after six months have recommendations to.
Hopefully we grow, right, right. Um, I second the motion. Unless you had a discussion, I'm sorry, Vince.
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
I, I.
Thank you. Oh, and I I should have said this earlier, but AJ, who is my co-chair, um, was unable to be here tonight. He's just enthusiastically excited about um the committee as well.
It's been a long time coming. Great work.
Thank you again to everyone who applied and who are will be serving on the committee.
Glad to include everyone.
Um, so at this point, um, we have no other business on our agenda.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Yeah, one quick announcement.
Yep.
Uh, this, you, we may recall in summer of last year. It was summer of last year. Uh, applications were due to D C E D for um uh what they call multimodal improvements, the State Department of Economic Development. Uh, and those are essentially pedestrian centric improvements meant to beautify areas of a community. Crafton applied for three million. We were awarded three hundred twenty five thousand. So there's, there's good news there. It's definitely better than zero. Uh, we just got the announcement. Thank you, Megan, for giving us the heads up on that. Um, I'm I'm sure planning commission is going to be involved uh coming in the future. Here's the trick with it, though. It can only be spent on hard improvements. So no soft planning. You can only do ten percent engineering with the funds. So it's really just what things do we want to buy to make the pedestrian environment uh in historic, in the historic center of the borough better for people on the street?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that will be the conversation in the coming months.
The business owners we talked to for the Business Development Committee have lots of ideas.
Yes, I imagine they do.
Yes. I'm glad we have a Business Development Committee that we can pose those ideas and work with. Um, the limited funds that we got out of the three million that we.
There's only eighty million dollars to put in that whole pot of money for this.
Yeah, the fact we got awarded, I think.
It's a big deal.
Great job, great job.
And thank you to Senator Fontana for moving that over to finish.
Well said.
Yes.
Well said. Um, so it's, it's, uh, I think it's a good thing that we rec, we remind ourselves that when we receive grants, um, we're looked at in terms of a track record um for our implementability. Um, and the reason why we tend to do as well as we do as a as a, as a municipality in applying and receiving, being awarded these things um is because of the the staff's ability to go and take the recommendations that are given through planning, through council, through weather um and actually get them implemented. Um, a lot of these things are awarded, but nothing ever happens. Um, so great job to you guys. So, any other comments? With that, um, we're going to move to um uh uh general public comment. So this is not limited to anything that has been in the meeting. This is not limited to the agenda items. Um, this is general public comment. Again, the same house rules apply. Um, only Crafton residents, property owners or business owners may comment. Uh, comments are limited to three minutes. We're going to ask Mandy to uh to time those three minutes. Um, please do refrain from personal attacks and obscene uh languages. If you're local, if you're here and you choose to speak, um, please write down your address. We do not expect you to record that um into the audio record um because this is a recorded session. Um, so if you want to introduce your name, you don't, if you just, just write it down um on the paper. For those of you online, you can either, again, many people just say it. We don't, we're not asking you to do that. Um, if you are online, you can certainly text that uh as a direct message to the uh the the meeting hosts or panelists. Okay, so with that in mind. You got your hand up. Come on up.
Well, he's already standing. Yeah, he's already standing.
First of all, I wanted to address um the property values. In the current state that the community is in, the property values have been astounding on the sales. There's recently, in the past six months, there's one property that sold for well over six hundred thousand.
That's right.
Another one for well over five hundred thousand. Personally, I can't see by going to twenty five foot lots whether that's going to increase or decrease the value. And the homes that you selected, those are spot homes. The majority of homes in Crafton are not twenty five foot lot. My home is on a double lot, two fifty foot lot, two fifty foot wide. So there's a hundred feet. So what are you going to do now? Make mine nonconforming? Or are you going to reheat it to four twenty five foot lots? Number two, in question to the items that you highlighted on the uh Alengany County Bar Association Association uh Realtor's Sales Agreements. Those are loopholes. I've never ever seen them come into effect. My wife is in real estate. She's been in real estate experience since nineteen ninety eight. It's never been an issue, I believe. It's my personal opinion. You just found some loopholes to back up your position. That's fine. And I don't mean to insult anybody or anything. That's my opinion. Um, first of all, nonconforming, nonconforming to what? To what the proposal is or the current? The current zones, there are nonconforming properties. You change the zones and there are going to be other nonconformal properties such as mine. Why don't you just grandfather them in instead of going through this tremendous exercise? If you're on a twenty five foot lot, grandfather it in, grandfather mine in. From this day forward, if somebody wants to build something on a twenty five foot lot and change the code from this day forward, you're going through an exercise that's taking a lot of people's time and efforts. And I know that there's a lot of people that are really upset about things.
Yep.
Um, excuse me, I've been trying to make notes as you're going along. Yeah, so make a moment where you're going to make properties that are currently the code, not good. Currently not code, you're going to make them the code. So this is an effort of utility. It's never, ever, ever been a problem in Crafton. Why did we buy here? Because of the way it is, the way it's structured, the way the homes are, the way the lots are. I'm going to sum it up. It's, if they broke, don't fix it. And that's what we're doing. We're trying to fix something that's not broke.
That's tough.
I I want to clarify something that no home that it it that green map will show you that your home is not nonconforming because we allow twenty five foot lots. You can have hundred foot wide lots, you can have two hundred foot wide lots, you can have three hundred foot wide lots. That is simply the minimum allowing everybody that has houses currently to be conforming. That does not change anybody who's above it. And it does not change, if you have a fifty foot wide lot, you cannot build two houses on it. You have to build one house as required by the current zoning code. What this does is makes many, many more houses conforming.
First, thanks for holding off on voting on this. I mean, we get these things on Savvy Citizen like, you know, this is going to be voted on tonight and decide something. So that's why we get upset. Um, but let me ask this because I don't understand your very first slide, like three different things about conforming.
Yeah, definitions. Yeah.
Could you, that those weren't included in these packets, were?
It's in there. Those are phrases that are defined in the back of the rezoning code.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll see those when you flip to it.
Okay, so let me ask you this. So when you say conforming, I understand conforming lot size, conforming setback. All these properties now that you're going to say are conforming, what about the properties where the garage is at five foot from the alley?
Right.
Are they, they're nonconforming now?
They're, they're nonconforming.
So all of those, my fence is on the.
Well, I'm sorry, accessory uses like a garage
Yeah.
are allowed a closer setback to.
Right, but I can tell you there's garages that are not five foot from the.
Right.
And like, a fence is an accessory structure, right?
I'm not sure if it goes down to fences. I don't know who goes.
It does not. It has to be a structure. Fences have their own specific uh designation in in the code. But a garage would be nonconforming. So if you wanted to rebuild the garage, you would have to uh you would have to put it within the three foot setbacks. If you're just repairing your garage, it would still be grandfathered in. And that only applies to the structure. So it doesn't apply to the house. So your house would not be nonconforming. Only the garage structure would be nonconforming.
Of course, it's very confusing. And I think there needs to be a lot more information provided to us. But so just out of curiosity, just because personally, we have a shed that's eight by eight. It's made of resin. It's riddled. As of this week, we're going to go and look and talk to somebody about building a nice ten by ten, good structure, put it there. I have to get a permit. I understand that. My fence is on the line. So you're telling me that that the building guy is not going to come and say, oh, well, you can put your shed there, but now your fence, you got to move it three feet. My fence has been there fifty years.
Your fence will be fine. Yeah, you shouldn't.
You know.
No, fences are allowed on property lines. That's the purpose of fences, right? So.
So I think I read in your word, said accessory structures, it mentioned fences. But.
We can double check. Let's, let's work together. We can double check.
That's fine. And my other, I mean, one of my other arguments was I would like some local realtors to tell us how many sales have been lost or reduced because of the nonconforming law. I mean, I don't, I don't know, but I'd like to hear it from the local realtors.
Sure.
Um, you know, so I, let me just be my address. I'm sure I have many more questions, but I can't think of someone right now. But I would be glad to, I'd be happy to have more information so that we can all make a better informed comments. And thank you again for your time.
Thanks, Neil.
I have a couple of comments. Um. Again, I think I've mentioned this before. It's been a constant change. Tonight, density was the big word. And I'd like to point out that back in September, I had a one on one with Jim and with Mike with myself and another friend that came to this meeting. And in that meeting, the word densify was used periodically throughout that meeting. Now, tonight, it's not about density, but back in September, it was about density. I have minutes on that meeting. I have who said what, when they said what, and in what context. The other word that I'm hearing tonight is experts, and I want to thank you because I believe the last last month or two, that word was used to knock alive. And now tonight, I finally get to hear not the experts on this. I do understand that perhaps Jim and Mike, you really want us to go with. I get that. Mike, I have to commend your tenacity. You've been really working through this for a long time. So tenacious, yes. But I'm wondering, now you're not saying it's not about density. But is this your way, changing lot sizes? Is this your way to achieve density? Is this the loophole that we will all agree to and fall into and then suddenly Crafton becomes densified? I'd, I'd like to have some of those questions answered.
Sure.
I really want.
The, towards your last question about density, the answer is no. What, again, what we, Jim and I are proposing is the zoning code reflect lot sizes that currently exist within Crafton. But this does not create new lots at twenty five feet. There are um, I don't know, Jim knows the numbers better than me, something north of a hundred lots already twenty five feet within Crafton. And those lots have houses on them. And those homes, those property owners, those renters, those landlords are currently nonconforming within the current zoning code. So simply reducing the lot size from a minimum of forty feet within the new zoning code down to twenty five feet to reflect the fact that there are twenty five foot lots solves that nonconformity.
Yes, and to be, and to be specific, Thomas Street residents who were at the last meeting asked us if we could make their houses conforming specifically. And that was the goal of this. It's why I measured every single lot in the borough to understand what the reality was on the ground. I had the square footage, but I did not have the lot width. And now I do after a considerable amount of work to measure that and to see what exists. And also, um, when we were talking about density, back in those meetings, we were talking about it in terms of the central business districts and allowing for um residential in those business districts like existed seventy, eighty years ago, to be able to improve that and allow for more businesses in the borough.
I have in my minutes of our meeting to what you said that you wish to densify Crafton double. But what it is now, that's, that's in my notes. That's what you said, Jim, I believe you said it as well. We've talked about it several times. So I just want everyone to understand that. I have the minutes, I have you on the recording.
As a values proposition and as a professional economic development person, density is good for business. So yes, that is one of my values. That is something I think is good for communities. Yes.
Very clear. You've made it clear.
Additionally, additionally, Carla, your business right now within downtown Crafton is a nonconforming use as we speak. As we speak, okay.
I know.
And the code fixes that for you.
Well, we'll, we'll have to see. We'll have to see how this is going to play out.
Okay.
Um, also, I want to make a comment. Also, back in, I don't know, maybe it was October, a steering committee was formed. Same thing as the Business Division or Business Developer Community Commission that you just created. So are these two, the steering commission in this community gonna work together, this business community that you just formed? In the best three minutes.
I don't know. The steering committee that I know existed was related to zoning, and to my knowledge, the steering committee no longer. Meets, no longer exists. They're not, these, the subcommittee is not connected to the steering committee. However, there are members of the business development committee who served on the steering committee, Greg Losnack.
Thank you.
James Megan, I'm just anecdotally, the house that's by me that's non-conforming, you sold. For a pretty good price. So that's just to keep in mind. I don't think that conforming and non-conforming kind of thing that Vince spoke to. Is a make or break kind of thing for people who want to buy houses or rent here. I'm speaking to conforming, just a bit of a logic kind of problem here. Um, so the sunoco that's right by us will be made non-conforming under this new proposition. And so if it switched hands according to Jim Price's last meeting. Um, it would no longer be able to be a gas station. So if we're worried about the light. Um, the remediation of that property, if it switched hands, would have to go on to the new owner. And so that's a pretty massive cost. Wouldn't that also then? Increase light, or at least the potential for it. So if we're so for conformity, we're, we're going to make a gas station. Non-conforming, and that is a bigger process and more expensive to invert that back to usable. Uh, land, and that would go on the next person who buys it. So just in terms of consistency, it doesn't seem like we're really chasing down the same thing. So we're, we're saying conformity, but. It's a bit of a mixed fabric, so.
Yeah, I hear you. If I can respond to the gas station comment, um, gas stations within historic business districts are. Not, uh, the highest and best use within historic districts. Uh, which is why that gas station will become non-conforming. Now, a future buyer. Will have to do diligence and understand that. And purchase the property with the expectation of turning it into something else. Something that will likely add more density to that spot and therefore increase. The value of the entire business district as a whole.
I would say the same logic applies to home buyers then too.
Yes, agreed. Yeah, home buyers need to do their diligence. Can't agree more.
Well, and I want to add, and I want to add one piece. Uh, James, you got one piece of what I said incorrect. I said if it is, if, if a new buyer buys it, they can absolutely use it as a gas station as long as it's a continuing use. As long as it has been used as a gas station up until when it was bought. And I think they have eighteen months to continue using it as a gas station. However, if it is not being used as a gas station for more than. A given amount of time, and then it is bought, then it would be non-conforming. It would be grandfathered in. If you purchased it immediately after someone sold it. As, and it was being used as a gas station until, and Mandy, I don't know if you can double. Check me if I'm right on that, but I think that's the, the, the rule.
Yeah, that's correct. As long as the use continues to the new owner, but if it's shutting down for twelve months, there's a presumption of abandonment. Um, so that at that point, it could not be a gas station anymore.
Okay, I would then say that we extend that same thing to. Home buyers in non-conforming properties then too, it's just grandfathered in.
And that is the case already. Non-conforming property. Fathered in.
And I, and I think the difference is you're talking about six hundred homes that are owned by people and one business. So you're talking about a very different level of scale here.
My name is Davis Percy. Resident of Duncan Avenue, thirty-five years. My wife, sixty-six years. Her mother, a hundred years. Never seen anything like this. We brought this memorandum, we got it yesterday. So we don't have enough participation here. You didn't give them enough time. Okay, this is wrong. I get these in the mail at least once a week. People interested in buying my property, which are developers. Okay. You have a property fifty-foot wide, building on it is in blight. You have a vacant lot next to it. What's? Prevents a developer coming in and buying both parcels. Rips down that building. And creates four twenty-five foot lots. Out of those two parcels. He can do a consolidation plan. And then after the consolidation plan, he can re-subdivide that property. What's gonna prevent him from doing that?
Nothing, but he would be subject to the process.
He'll be subject to what?
To the subdivision process.
Right, so.
He would have, he would have to go to multiple public meetings.
He's done everything.
We're, we're not trying to keep it a secret. It's a public process.
You're not talking about.
Yeah.
Well, but this is what's happening.
Thank you for bringing it up.
This is what's happening.
You are correct.
That's right.
Yes, and. Property purchasers have rights, guys. I mean, we can't, we can't help. If they want to submit a subdivision application, they have that right. And then there is a public process.
But your zoning can prevent that.
Yeah.
To a degree, to a. It can make it harder. Yeah.
Can I comment?
I'm not in real estate.
You're no longer?
I have a real estate license, but I don't practice real estate.
And you don't, you don't practice with picking up real estate?
No, I, because I have a real estate license, I'm required to be under a brokerage. That's the state of Pennsylvania law. So the realty brokerage that I'm under, I get no money from. And they are, you know, I just, I legally have to be under a brokerage, so they are very graciously housing me there.
Mike, how many houses have you sold and who owned them?
All right, so I guess it's time to go into this conversation to. Address plenty of social media rumors about me being a hedge fund manager or whatever ridiculousness is out there on this topic. As a professional urban planner, there's a lot of alignment between planning and the real estate industry. In Johnstown, when I chose to sell my house, I had a choice of hiring a real estate agent to sell it. And paying that three percent commission, which would have been dozens of thousands of dollars. Or I could pay five hundred dollars to get my real estate license, save that money and sell my house myself, which I did. When I moved to Pittsburgh, I bought my house with my real estate license. To save on the commission. You're shaking your head, but these are the facts of the matter. Don't interrupt me yet. I'm talking now. These are the facts. I do not practice real estate. I have a real estate license for my own financial best interest to sell my home and then buy a new home. That's the facts of the matter.
And it has saved the borough money because we have used it on our conservatorship process. Not having to pay an external real estate agent. That is the extent of his real estate.
But you need to get it on the MLS and you need to have access. You need to have.
Advertise it on your own.
And you need to have, okay, well, I chose, I wanted it on the MLS. That was my personal choice. Right, which I did. Right, which is still far less than paying the commission. Okay. The point is, I did not get a real estate license to become a real estate agent. I got a real estate license to sell my house and to buy another house for me. That I lived in.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you again for slowing down the process. Oh, my name is Crystal Bean. I live on Melvinia Street. And I'm proud to say that I love my home. It's a fifty-foot wide lot. I certainly hope no one buys it and sub- subdivides it and turns it into, this is not working. Uh, and turns it into a two-twenty.
It is working. I can hear you perfectly.
Thank you. Um, I want to piggyback off of what, um, Pat said here earlier. Um, about what was broken in the first place. And I know that was talked about early on in these meetings. And why we had to go through all of these changes. Um, if it isn't broken, don't fix it. And I've walked every home in this community, and I've seen a lot of blight. A lot of blight. And I think we have bigger fish to fry, bigger problems to fix. Before we start changing the things that we're talking about. Um, I really feel today that you devalued my home. And I just sold a home, so I will tell you, I did not have to have a real estate license. I actually hired Keller Williams to sell my home. It sold twice and it fell through. The second time it fell through was an FHA loan. That was the only time that the appraisal was challenged. So I can tell you that homes, and then, and then I sold it on my own, no problems, appraised very well. FHA, they're oftentimes afraid to appraise the home for what it is.
Why does it matter if I have a real estate license? Okay.
LLCs do you own? And how many properties have you purchased under that LLC?
Zero.
Okay, very good, because that is something that I was concerned about. Um, we can, I, I purchased a property under an LLC because I didn't want anyone to know that I purchased that property. So I know it can be done. But thank you for answering that. The, um. I really feel that the only, we don't have a problem selling and buying properties in this community. No one has ever said your house is non-conforming. I'm gonna devalue it, I'm gonna lower your appraisal. Otherwise, she would have bought the house for top dollar, like she said. Um, she said, I bought my homes, I paid a lot of money for it, and I'm a little concerned here. These homes, like Pat said, are selling like hotcakes. They're selling for top dollar unless they were poorly flipped, they're still sitting. But I think that this community needs an assessment, like you said, and my husband is in this business. Pat knows him well. I think we need to take a look at every home in this community, and I'm willing to sit there and punch it out and look at Allegheny County Real Estate. And do the homework. And if everybody wants to divide and conquer, let's do it, let's get it done. Because I think we need a lot of answers in this community. I've been here twenty years, my husband's been here seventy-two years. So it's time to be transparent and do the right thing. And again, I think we need to stop all this nonsense.
The use of non-conformity. Strikes fear in a lot of the elderly property owners. They don't understand what that means. So if you can change that wording, that they're, they're, they have fear. That they're gonna lose their home. The meaning of that word scares the heck out of them.
Probably a child for the elderly to see. I'm just going to react.
You state your name.
The mention of conformity, non-conformity, poison. So I'm gonna talk about the personal situation when it comes to me. I bought my house about thirty-three years ago. And have invested significant money, most recently about four grand. If you don't know my house on the American Avenue. To the right is a hoarder. A significant hoarder. He just wants. This hat come on here? The definition of conformity. You live somewhere else. You can't see him. And he keeps the outside property looking terrible. And you know what affects. The way I'm, I'm, I'm researched. Conformity. Hands in the back like numerous. Second formity. My wife is. And the two left. This is LLC, who just mentioned LLC? Thank you. That's to my love. So therefore, am I surrounded by conforming? Or not conforming? I don't know. But I'm all. So I'm gonna stick there. Because I wasn't an old person, because I know there I would be a bitch for sure. It's better I stay out of that. But I want you to understand that all of this chatter and all of the paper you've wasted. Using my money. Is better waste than my. Waste of time. Or waste of effort.
James, twenty-five Lincoln. First off, I want to apologize. Because I have spoken on the meeting when I was not appropriate. So I do apologize, but it is truly out of frustration. I appreciate everybody's efforts. And all the work that you've done. But I do want to piggyback on what Carla said. And if I had my green folder with me, I could tell you because at one of the first meetings. Mike and Jim said their goal was to increase population density in Crafton. From six thousand to twenty thousand. I have those numbers written down in my.
I don't know if I've said that, but we've never hidden the fact that we're interested in increasing density in the commercial areas. We've never hidden that. It's never been disguised.
Never.
And I have never said twenty thousand. We have at a max had eighty-five hundred people in this borough at any one time. I have never said twenty thousand. I have never even said seven.
So I piggyback on what Carla said there. And secondly. Crafton, I mean, everybody in this room. If you would look at what the average male female is. There aren't very many of us that would be conforming. Right? Um, and we're all okay. Everybody suffered, but we all meshed together and we're all here for the good of Crafton. And whether somebody chooses to buy a lot that is twenty-five foot wide. Or somebody chooses to buy a lot that's a hundred foot wide. Crafton, as the new slogan says, has a path for everyone. So, and if you buy a lot that's twenty-five foot wide. It would seem to me that you would expect to pay less than if you bought a lot that was a hundred foot wide. But so many people, and I'm a city girl, I pay no sharing. I've said that before. When I was here and we have twenty feet between our houses. We could pass stuff between the bathroom window on this side and my bedroom window. I thought I hit the jackpot. So I am not in any way, shape or form. Of making these conforming lots of twenty-five with two and a half and two and a half. No way. People choose to move to Crafton because they like what Crafton has to offer. If I wanted to live side by side by side by side by side, I could choose to stay in Sheraton. Or with these rocks, or I could go to Lawrenceville, or I could go to Bloomfield. But we're not the rocks. We're not Lawrenceville. We're not Bloomfield. I'm not sure where you live in Pittsburgh. Maybe that's what you want. You're an urban planner. Urban strikes me as those very. Crafton is more stellar. So I am not in favor of this at all. I think choices Crafton offers are good for us. That's what we like. And the other thing.
That's three minutes.
What the risk is for the non-conforming. I don't know what you get a broken light.
That's, that's three minutes. We're gonna appreciate that.
The other thing too was the properties. And I know there's some.
Very well.
But yes.
Very well, but yes.
Hi, I'm Heidi Nine. Um, just educate me, please, on a nonconforming use property, like this pictures of, was it Mallard Avenue, and the houses right beside each other? If the person that lived in the house on the right, if that one burned to the ground, which has happened, it happened in the house behind me on Linwood. Um, and most people rebuild that house if it's nonconforming use.
Yes, expeditiously.
Okay. Did meaning they have a year to it?
Eighteen months. Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, and they'd also have to get a special exception, I think.
Yes.
If it's completely destroyed or more than fifty percent.
On the same foundation, you rebuild.
Right.
There are some.
Foundation's no part.
But there are some additional criteria for the special exception.
Generally speaking.
And the insurance companies.
Yes.
Well, that's, there's uncertainty there. There's uncertainty.
Right.
Yeah.
About general exceptions.
Okay, I'll just be quick. Um, so we were looking at the map. We live on a lot that is nonconforming. We've been there for ten years. The issues you brought up have never been an issue for us. Like I've, none of that, none of the problems that we're coming up with, we have encountered. So I don't think that that is a, an issue. I think the bigger issue would be what does increasing or decreasing lot size have for our future? I think that is a greater risk. Also, just kind of a general comment about how the residents of Crafton have been treated when they bring up issues. Um, you can't continually make changes to this zoning code that increases density and then act shocked when people are frustrated and upset and they continually tell you, no, thank you, you don't want that, we are a suburban community, this is how, this is how we would like things to be, and then tell people to chill and get upset. The people of Crafton get to say what happens in Crafton and you aren't representatives of us. So, an example of that, and this is a stupid example, but it pisses me off, is the logo issue. I mean, sending a legal document to a Facebook group for using the logo, does the logo represent the government of Crafton or the people of Crafton? And so I think we get going, and this is not just this committee. I know that this kind of is council as a whole, I think. Like you just have to keep in mind that you have to listen to the people and respect when they're frustrated, maybe listen, like it's, it is just thing after thing after thing, and then you act shocked, oh, people are upset, so.
We have four online.
Am I not allowed to go again?
You've already gone. While we bring them up, why don't you come up, Crystal?
We can stop on Crystal Dean again. Um, when they brought up insurance, I'd like to know how an insurance company, I might get photos online, I might never meet my agent. How do they know whether my property is conforming or nonconforming and my rates are going to be affected as you indicated earlier in the presentation?
Because they asked the question.
What is the question they might ask?
What is the zoning of your property?
I'm changing, they never have.
Okay, well, I've been asked, I've been asked a question. Lots, lots of insurance companies ask this question.
Well, maybe your insurance, your insurance company, because I spoke to Erie about this not long ago.
My property insurance is Safeco Insurance.
Safeco.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, I never had that question asked. Um, one of the other questions I have is, again, I mentioned earlier that I walked to a lot of homes in Crafton. I love this town, I support this town, I'm a historian in this town. I hold the key to this town's history. Um, and I've reminded people of that. I love, I love Crafton, but I've seen a lot of blight. I was formerly on a blight committee. I have a question for you, Ms. Solicitor, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name. But there is a Pennsylvania law, um, that states if a landlord or an LLC owner that has a property in a community um, is delinquent and they're not adhering to the zoning or the code that's written in the community, that the borough can actually stop the payments from that tenant's rent and collect it until they conform. So it's something I'd like you to look into, and my husband's willing to look into it as well. But he said there is a state law that protects from blight, and I hope we have bigger fish to fry in this community. We really do have to fix the blight before we start making these changes that potentially could devalue our properties.
Thank you, Krista. We have, uh, three on, three on, three online. Nicole, we'll start with you. You are live.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I want to say I'm very uncomfortable with the new recommendation to change away from conservancy zoning. I vehemently oppose any changes to conservancy districts. I bought my house because it is in a conservancy district and in fact was more valuable to me and to the previous owner because of its zoning. Conservancy zoning exists primarily to protect and manage natural resources, often focusing on conserving land, water quality, and wildlife habitats through flood control, erosion prevention, and watershed management. Construction in these areas needs to respect the nature of the terrain and the downstream impacts or changes made there, usually through collaboration with the landowners. I've seen far too much construction in this region that has intensified flooding and erosion with serious impacts and costs to those who live downstream. I consider myself a steward of the land I live on and of the land that lies below it. For example, I don't use pesticides, so if my lot is rezoned, I would be much more likely to leave. And that will undoubtedly change the character of the community. Uh, second, I don't really care what the real estate industry wants or considers to be, quote, a defect. I care what the people who live here want. We're living in a time when individual property ownership itself is about to be challenged by corporations on a massive scale. I'm not in favor of any change that makes development or purchase by companies or outside investors easier. Also, after seeing the pictures of the houses on twenty-five foot lots, I would not advocate for any more housing that close together. People don't generally want to live that close together uh, with only a few feet between houses. It's a compromise on affordability or access when they do. And just to say, I'm not opposed to affordable housing, but I would like us as a community to intentionally promote people's quality of life at all income levels. That means being able to afford housing that promotes their health and well-being through privacy, safe distances to prevent fire hazards, and allowing emergency access and ensuring things like parking capacity. Uh, sorry, I'm not finished. People need natural light, ventilation, outdoor space for their mental health. Lots too close together cause a strain on infrastructure, and not to mention overcrowding is known to increase people's stress levels. I think this is why uh, people are so concerned about this. Lastly, you said density is good for business, but if density increases, land values typically increase, which leads to developers building more expensive housing rather than affordable housing to recoup costs. So that becomes speculation and gentrification, which we don't want. Thank you.
Cody Sheets, you're up next. Uh, you are live.
Everybody hear me okay?
We got you, thank you.
Yep, uh, so I, I, I think that it's pretty clear with all of these scenarios we got being spoken about tonight. There's been so many changes since the last public forum meeting, uh, has happened. And I think that the Planning Commission and Council uh, should consider having another public forum meeting where all of these things can be explained because it's, it's very clear that administration is being, is incredibly fed up just by this meeting alone. The tone in in this meeting is, is quite contentious. Um, I, I have a, a quick question, just as, as clarification. The, uh, the height for new builds in Crafton is going to be reduced from one hundred to eighty feet tall. Is that correct?
Uh, if it's not correct, you're very, very close.
Okay, and, um, but the square footage requirements inside of the apartments within that building are going to be eliminated with this zoning draft. Is that correct?
Uh, not eliminated, it will default to the minimum within.
Within the occupancy of the fire department, correct?
Precisely, yes.
Okay, and so, uh, in theory, um, even though you're reducing the size of the height, um, you are crunching the square footage, uh, into as many spaces as possible. And so twenty-five foot lots being the minimum, which, which you are using as a, as a, you know, a whole, oh, well, well, we're just trying to make everything conforming. Really what it is, is that in the long term, it benefits the goal for what you have talked about, about density. And it went from density to mixed use, and now we're back to density, and we're not trying to hide that we're trying to create density. But like, ladies and gentlemen who are listening to this, here is your evidence. Crafton wants density. And, and they're trying to say they're not trying to hide it, but for the last six months, they've been trying to hide it. They've been trying to backdoor the whole way through. Now Mike can suddenly use his real estate license to help find loopholes and, and, uh, quote, save the borough money. But really, the goal here is to reduce square footage requirements and crunch apartments into potentially thirty studio apartments within an eighty-foot building. Um, and, and, and then minimize the square, or the, the lot requirements, minimize the setbacks so that you can pack this town with people. Uh, and, and, and it's as clear as day. There's not even like an argument about it anymore. So I, I, I just, I really think that at this point that you guys really need to consider having another public forum. Um, because this is like out of control. I mean, Mike, you're sitting here, you're sitting here screaming at residents, you know, which is typically Jim's job, but like now you're showing your true colors. So, um, you know, you guys want to avoid this conflict and this confrontation, hold another public forum, creating a citizen engagement committee just as easily as you created the business committee. You know, you could do all this, but you refuse because you don't want engagement, you're tired of people being pissed off. I know I'm at my three minutes. So I, I, I'll finish, uh, but you know, like thi- this, this, this idea uh, really should be taken to another public forum meeting with council, with planning commission members where details can be completely explained to citizens. There's been too many changes since the last one happened. Thanks.
Thank you, Cody. Uh, let's see here. Uh, Kristen, if you're still with us, you're going live.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I, I think that one thing that's occurring is that, um, the word density is, uh, is scaring people. Um, it's all over the national and the, the local news. There's a push for uh, density across the country in housing to try and, and solve a housing crisis and a homelessness crisis. Um, and a lot of that, or a, a decent portion of that crisis is being caused by the real estate industry itself and by private equity firms buying, um, you know, uh, residential properties and turning them into investment properties. That's a whole nother issue uh, that is not necessarily going to be addressed by density. So, when you got, when density has been mentioned, I've heard, uh, Jim and I think Mike, you guys have tried to clarify tonight that you're referring to density in the business districts, correct?
That is correct.
And so that would be the C T O D, so the area around the busway, and then the shopping center area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I think part of what is making people nervous is maybe we have not heard, um, in a public forum like this. What is, what would be, um, a positive, or you know, why do we in theory want to create more density, and I'm assuming you mean residential den- density via mixed use, but why is that a good thing in a business district?
I mean, I can answer that now. I'm happy to answer it at a future public forum.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna pause, and I think that, um, uh, there, there will need to be, um, um, some further, um, information provided. Um, but yes, we can, we can get a full answer to, to the, the analysis around density, um, for you, Kristen.
Is that, can you, is there like a two, you know, too long, don't read, like just a brief statement, since everybody's bringing this up tonight?
It improves the sustainability and business environment of the business district with more density, specifically, just like you said, residential over commercial.
So if you densify the C T O D area, there are homes in that area.
Correct. Means those homes stay there. Yep, yep, no change.
And so if I'm, if I'm hearing what you're, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, the, the, the theory is that if you have more, uh, people living in a business district, then that will help the businesses stay in business, um, longer or, you know, long term, because you have more people that are patronizing those businesses. Is that, am I understanding correctly?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Uh, when, like you said, um, residential over, um, uh, commercial, um, you don't mean in favor of, you mean physically.
Physically.
Above.
Above, yes.
The first floor residential stories above.
Yeah, that, so that, um, that's mixed use, correct? We see that all over the city now. Shadyside, Lawrenceville, um, and I think in certain areas that's built into their codes, um, that they have to be, you know, mixed use, a mix of residential and business.
Correct, yep, you're nailing it, Kristen.
Last time. You're not increasing any business because you don't have a party. You put properties on twenty-five foot lots, where are they gonna fund? You have a big, big parking problem. That's why our current business districts aren't flourishing as they should.
Thank you. Good, Kristen, I'll let you finish.
Uh, no, I, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm, I'm done basically, but I just wanted to try to get some, you know, clarification or at least a, a statement that, that could explain for everybody, you know, why this might be a good thing, why density in certain areas might be a good thing and not necessarily, you know, increase the entire residential population in the borough, not pack everybody in like sardines.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Any other online? No, that.
You are online and you do have a, a comment. Um, you're welcome. Please use the button in the center with the hand to put your hand up and we will give you, um, your three minutes. Um, there is, there is no more, are there any more speakers in the room? One more, yep.
I've had a really brief comment because reading over the memo that came out yesterday and then even seeing the slide presentation, I do understand Dave's point. It is very scary for people who, you know, may be elderly, they're not reading memos or seeing this for the first time and they're thinking if their house burns down or if something happens, they're not going to be able to rebuild their house. It's not clear. It's just like scare, scare, scare. And then you see the presentation, your house is worthless, your, you know, your house sale can fall through, none of that. None of these people in this room, I think, believe that, but the older people don't understand. They read this, they listen to what you're saying and they take it as, oh my God, like I'm not going to be able to sell my house, I won't be able to rebuild my house. We need to change the way that this is worded because it, it, to me, just reads as a scare tactic to get what you want instead of trying to explain the actual truth, that yes, your house can be rebuilt, and yes, your house will sell probably over asking price, because I've also sold houses, I've been in real estate, and I've never had a person fall through unless they wanted to walk away from a deal because their house didn't conform. They know what they're buying. So, that's all. Thank you.
Any others? All right, with, oh. Just had a quick question regarding that history, the, the process here. When Zonta originally looked at the thorough zoning, was there a recommendation to change anything regarding conforming property? Well, if so, what was the recommendation? Thank you.
Uh, that's for Jim, if you remember, Jim. We may have lost Jim. I, I wasn't there in the beginning, but so I, I can't answer.
Again, I, I, I want to thank everybody. Um, that concludes the public comment, unless there was anyone else. I don't see any hands raised online. Uh, no one in the room. Um, tonight's presentation in response to the request from the folks on Thomas Street last month, who asked what it would take to bring their properties into conformity. Um, I appreciate the analysis. I appreciate the analysis, the work that, the whole lot of work that was done to understand what that looks like from where we are in the current code. Where we are in the draft code to theorizing what this would look like at this level, bringing the Thomas Street properties into conformity. So with that, it seems like there is a great opportunity to do some work to gather the feedback tonight. To maybe prepare some FAQ, some sort of formal kind of what it is, what it isn't, a little more detail that can be presented. So that, you know, given the opportunity for the commission to kind of receive what's been said, which is a lot between the presentation. And your comments both online and in person tonight, for those of you who are here and those of you that had to leave. So with that, I thank you all. We're in this together. I really, I really hope you guys believe that. So with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you all for listening to us.
I just, I just want to request that when there's fear or there's confusion, that instead of bringing malice. We are, we are just your neighbors and people. Like Jim and Mike are, do their jobs and you can disagree with their decision-making. It's just helpful for us and it, you know, makes us feel like our time is valued when I, I mean, I can understand being confused and fearful and I hate that that happened. I mean, that upsets me that we put things out that make people feel fear or make people feel confused. I just think the response to that is curiosity. And bringing your questions to us and I hope that we're able to answer them. And we're just your neighbors and trying our best. That's. So I'll move to.